I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I can't vote on the approval of minutes.
Well, that's right. So we're gonna skip the minutes.
So we'll just skip that, yeah.
And I actually, we're gonna talk a little bit further in there.
Okay.
Because I actually am going to ask for a vote on the finance report, so let's hold on that also.
Sure, yeah.
There's some transfers that were open for.
Yeah.
So we're gonna hold on minutes, we're gonna hold on finance report. Communications, you should have just all received electronically, the quarterly for Southern Worcester County Collaborative. So that is all this month. Mrs. Pelley!
Hi, folks. Actually, I got the wrong teacher down here, and this will participate. So as you can see, our enrollment continues to creep up a little bit. I want to recognize Mr. Kay's class will participate in a tribute to the Revolutionary War soldiers at the old burial ground on Thursday, November 9th. I want to thank Bob Briere for organizing this annual Veterans Day tradition. As you may or may not know, we actually do this twice a year. We go down for Memorial Day, and we go down for Veterans Day, and it is wonderful. You know, the brothers of the American Revolution are there. It's just a really, really wonderful event. It's very brief, so it happens, I think we're at 10 o'clock on Thursday, the 9th. So thank you to Bob every year for doing that. Thank you to Josh and Rona Roy for their generous donation of $500 to our PE department for extra supply, so primarily soccer balls, shin guards and things like that, but lots of things. We're going to be talking about the MCAS, MCAS results, and I have the wrong year in here, my goodness. Professional development, we actually had an early release last Wednesday, and we worked primarily with the Sturbridge Police Department. We went over our ALIS policies and procedures, and we also did a severe weather evacuation with the staff. We had a situation in 2019 in which we had to bring everybody in at dismissal time and evacuate to the lower gym. We did, we ran through it with staff, we took some feedback from staff. I invited Matt White, our MEMA representative, and Lieutenant Ash from the fire department to come down and run through it. They have made modifications that we will be sharing with our staff and rehearsing again. We also had our PBIS, our Positive Behavior Program, met, and they did, and actually have done the kickoff for this school year, bringing back the bare paws and all of our wonderful incentives and doing some additional training for children in regard to, you know, how we behave in the cafeteria, how we behave on the bus, and all sorts of other places. And the staff were given times to complete the annual civil rights PowerPoint. I would direct you to all of the wonderful updates from all of our grade levels and upcoming events for November, there's a lot, but primarily our parent teacher conferences are scheduled for the 14th and 15th. Okay, any questions?
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
You have a quorum, you wanna move back up to finance?
I'm gonna move the minutes first, and then we'll go to the story.
Oh, yeah, that's right, we got that vote also.
My apologies.
No, no, it's all good. No, move along. It's great. As I said, you got a couple of hats you're wearing.
Yeah. Okay, so we have the approval of minutes, so I have a motion to approve the minutes from October 5th, regular session. To vote? For a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Now, Mrs. Blake wants to vote back.
Okay. Yep. So your finance report, couple of things. Good news, okay news. So the housekeeping, which I'll ask you to do last after I talk to everything. Page two is what you often see at this time of year after negotiations. So we negotiated last year, and during negotiations, we just have a pool of dollars in one line. Now, when you look at your report, there's a lot of professional teacher lines that look like they're minus because we need to do transfers to put the right amount after negotiations into those lines. So in a minute where we could get it over with, we're just asking you to vote the transfers as laid out, and what that will do is change the beginning balances in each of the budget lines, which is a nice clean reset as we start building the new budget, so when we're looking year to year, we know what's right and accurate. So let's just, I recommend that you all vote to change the budget balances, beginning balances, as presented.
Okay, do I have a motion to change the beginning budget balances as presented? Yes, moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Awesome. So that will clear out most of your negatives here. There will still be, oh, no, we're even taking care of your special ed. Great, awesome, because some of this was negotiations, some of it was because staff within your building changed departments from last year to this year. So this should clean most of that out nicely, and then we can move on. Notes of interest, so I am on, whoop, it's not even there yet. When you look at the tuitions here, okay? Your last page, page three is showing $400,000 in the hole for tuitions, which we've been talking about in one. So the good news is we got, I thought this was even gonna be a little bit bigger. We've got a little more Circuit Breaker than we thought we would get, so we've already taken care of that offline. We did receive almost 100, I think 98,000 in Rural Aid. So with your okay, by next month, I'm gonna divert close to 100,000 to Rural Aid to take that off the plate. We're gonna be fine, because the last thing that we will do, but I kinda wanted to fill you all in, we're gonna move another 150,000 into Circuit Breaker. We had a little technical snag in closing our books. So if you'll remember, last year in the spring, we put the article on to get extra, extra, to get through last year. And we were waiting, waiting, waiting to find out what our extraordinary relief, emergency relief for Circuit Breaker was gonna come. We found out, we got 174,000 in emergency funds. I would have pulled back the 200,000, but we found out that we had some more we were gonna be dealing with this year. So talked to Barbara, we said, you know what, we're gonna leave that to get through, so we can leave that money to cover this year's problem. Well, turns out the state, the DOR, wouldn't allow us to roll that Circuit Breaker emergency money in, to leave it in the Circuit Breaker revolving fund. And we found that out as the town accountant was going to get free cash certified. That's okay. So that means it ended up increasing the town's free cash by 150, 170,000 that we all thought was gonna be waiting in Circuit Breaker to cover some of this. Already had, as soon as Barbara saw that happening with the DOR telling the accountant, "We've gotta close that out," Barbara and I were literally emailing each other at the exact same time, saying, "Well, there's a special town meeting coming up, we think maybe we'll go and try and get it then." And she was like, "Absolutely, I get that." So did, do you know if they scheduled the special town meeting? I know they were looking for dates. I haven't heard that it's been locked in.
I don't know, I thought it was supposed to be somewhere in December, but it hasn't been locked in, and I think they have a meeting.
So it might end up in a January.
They have a meeting Monday, I would say.
So with your okay, so it hasn't been set, there's no emergency right now. But when we find out when it is, I would like to submit an article to get the funds that were intended to stay there for special ed tuitions and were just rolled into free cash. I'll do that special town meeting article when we find out when that's gonna be. It may end up more in a January, I think they were trying to find dates.
Yeah.
And we're having a lot of date conflicts with the high school. Might come knocking at the Burgess store if we don't find a date soon. But if you're okay, it puts it where it was, it'll help clear this out for this year. And then, the Circuit Breaker is increasing, anticipated for next year, so I thought next year's budget was going to be horrible again. Right now, it looks like Circuit Breaker is finally gonna catch up, and we might not be in as rough shape as we thought we were. But we've only done a very, very quick first draft of the budget. So that's sort of an FYI, as long as you guys are okay with that, I'll go and grab that money back. We'll be able to take care of most of this. No, you know what, I would share with you, especially if the date hasn't been set, I'll have time to show you a draft of the article in December.
So the Circuit Breaker money and the extra 200 that we got from the town, that'll all go to that?
Well, the extra 200 got us through last year's budget.
Got, right, okay.
In reality, we could have gotten, gotten through last year's budget without it if we had spent the extra Circuit Breaker, but we all were like, okay, let's leave that there because we knew about a couple more placements, so.
Didn't we submit, we submitted the article though before we knew that we were getting?
Right, and then we waited and waited and waited. And I would have, in the past, I was prepared on town meeting floor to say, never mind, we don't wanna take no action. But we had found out a few weeks beforehand that we had some new placements for the current year, and we were already feeling up against the law, so. It will all catch up right now as long as we can stabilize, and I feel like things are stabler than the last year or two, and the state is certainly, while they increased the private tuitions more than they should have last year, they at least know enough to be fully funding the Circuit Breaker line at the full 75% and looking at it. So we are quickly, it's really about paying when it happens, but the reimbursements for next year are looking higher to capture all of the new placements, and I think we'll be okay.
So those two lines, the special ed tuition mass and private, they both look worse than they did last month, which you had said you anticipated.
Right.
Should we anticipate that that will continue to get worse?
No, I believe this, this, I believe, at this point in time, we have encumbered all of them, as long as nothing else happens. We've encumbered all of them with a little bit extra already in Circuit Breaker, and we're now looking to clear this out. And I think we'll be able to do it between that added, whatever you wanna call it at this point, free cash or Circuit Breaker fund, and your Rural Aid, I think we'll get through this year.
Okay.
Okay? Other than that, I think, once we make the transfers, things are going fine, and we're, we're working on spending down the last of the SO3. We're finally, now that we know we can take care of our tuition problems, we're gonna go back to, at our next meeting with Ms. Pelley to review. I think we're in line with what we planned all along with SO3. So that final spend down will be some more technology, any last minute, either facility or technology things that we'll, we'll get, and with any luck, that might help us when we're building a capital plan for next year, not needing as much technology, and maybe looking at some building projects. So we will spend it up, spend it down.
Does anyone have any other questions for Mrs. Pelley?
Okay. Oh, and we're back to me. All right, finance. So I will just quickly, two things. A, the reminder that the joint meeting, 29th, Wednesday, which is not typically, it's almost always the same night as a Tantascal meeting, which it is, but it's usually Tuesday. So make note, this one is gonna be Wednesday, the 29th, 6 o'clock, in the junior high. Your primary agenda items are the fiscal '25 calendar and fiscal '25 central office budget. And then, other than that, we did just want to mention the budgetary impact thus far of the influx in new students. And if you look at, I know, Mrs. Pelley will say her numbers are a little bit off, but when you look at her enrollment, it's important and interesting to note that if you look at November '23 to November '22, it's higher, but does, but not as much higher as what back in September '23. So that September '23 really was like August 30th date, first day of school, which I do wanna make it clear, there were a lot of move-ins a week or two before school that had not been enrolled and brought in.
We had 25 kindergarteners, if you recall, I think I spoke to other than you, they made 25 kindergarteners that we were screening on the second day of school that hadn't been fully registered and vetted at that point.
Yeah. So there've been new students from many places across the town. A lot had enrolled over the summer, but there was a huge influx a couple of weeks before school, as well as the population, the newer state placed ones. So that's a bigger number than just what we all are thinking of the most recent state, state place students. So given that, though, I just wanted to update you on the increase in student population, homeless impact, L-impact, so from a budgetary point of view, we're still anticipating and have not yet received the emergency funds from the state, but are told they're coming, and we're counting on them coming because at this point, we have added the equivalent of 1.5 English learner teachers. Now, your English learner population has been ticking up for the last couple of years. And if you'll remember, you started this year with only one certified L-teacher and then some support staff. So the model we've moved into is two fully certified L-teachers, which you're very fortunate to find early in the year. And at this point in time, so that new one is gonna be funded from these emergency funds. We will build it into next year's budget because we think your needs were already high last year, and they'll continue. And then we'll figure out from the budget point of view, how much, if any, support staff will also need. But tonight, it'll be nice to have two fully certified L-teachers, one of which, full disclosure right now, in the world of, you know, we're waiting for the money to come in, but we're doing what we need to do. The L-teacher, and we are experiencing some transportation costs for a homeless family living in Sturbridge with students in another, that have been attending a school district elsewhere in the state. And our obligation, because they chose to continue to attend in the town they were last year, we're transporting there, so that's costing us. But we can pay that from the emergency funds when they come in, so it should not impact our budget.
So we only have to pay that, or do we have to pay for like school choice for them to go there?
No, so we don't, we don't pay anything to the school slash school of choice. And even the transportation, the law is, McKinney-Vento is, we split the cost. So, but it's, it's still, it's, it's enough, a lot of times, our homeless are like closer here. This is one that's a little bit further away, so the cost is, is starting to add up.
So we split the cost of the transportation?
With the, with the receiving, with, with the original, with the, with the school district of origin.
I bet you, okay.
Okay?
Do we have a longer projection of enrollment, like, year, like 10 years out of projected enrollment?
No.
Have we ever?
Because I think we talked about it with, in regard to the kindergarten registration and having to rethink how we're doing things. Our census numbers are really, really far off. So I think I may have told you, we had like 50 to 60 kids showing up as kindergarten eligible when we contacted the town hall in January to send us the information, and we now have a class of 120, you know? Like, it's very, it's almost impossible to make a clear prediction.
Yeah, it's odd, and we try and look at the census. Sturbridge, I wouldn't say it's an anomaly. So across the district, we've had declining enrollment for a number of years, pre-COVID. Just before COVID, Sturbridge had had its first year or two of declining. Then we lost total control of being able to anticipate any kind of enrollment between homeschool and hybrids, et cetera. So it's been hard to get the handle on, on coming back, because it took a couple of years, I think, for folks to say, "Okay, yeah, I'm ready to have them back." So now, we can start next year to try and take a fresher look and be in, in contact with the town planner and the census to try and get a feel, but Sturbridge does seem to have these crazy summers of move-ins or move-outs. It's really hard to predict. So a lot easier at the secondary level, obviously, we can look at what's happening in that elementary and try and anticipate, but the little ones, folks that move in and out a lot over the summer tend to, tend to be those with little ones. Once they have the older kids, the older kids start to say no. If they have any say, they're like, "No." So we see it less. Yeah, but we'll keep looking at it.
Yes, because we had, or because we knew last year's budget, or this current year's budget was very, very tight, and based on what we were seeing for numbers for kindergarten from, from the census, we actually had a moment of pause where we said, "Well, you know, could we do with one less section of kindergarten?" It's something we like to do, but it was something that, you know, if we're gonna have that low level of enrollment, but thank goodness we didn't, because we'd be in trouble now, so.
How much room do we have to expand? Like, if the numbers bum, do we have any buffer? I guess I'm, I'm speaking in terms of facility.
Right, so.
Do you want a new school? No, I don't want a new school, I just wanna make sure.
So a couple of things. The classrooms, the actual physical size of our classrooms, you've been in them, they're not that big, especially once you get into fifth and sixth grade and you have 23, 24 children in a class. It's, it's packed up there, okay? You know, if you were to ask me, the only thing to consider, we actually have five classrooms of substantially separate, five, five substantially separate classrooms, which is up three since I arrived 10 years ago.
Right, since the building, yeah. If you looked at what the building was supposedly built for in enrollment, on paper, back when it was built, folks might say, "You're not in capacity for another 100 students." But back then, the additional, right, the, the separate classrooms, the special ed programs weren't on the radar at all. And then they do take space, and they're good for the town and good for the kids, so.
Right, they're very good for everybody.
That's really what, what puts us in a different place of saying, it's not just a number on some permit or drawing plan.
So what's the, I mean, I mean.
I'm not taking a seat. No, I'm not taking a seat, I just wanna understand that we can accommodate the students.
It wouldn't be a very large number, would you say? I mean, if you're, you wouldn't be looking at hundreds of more children, you would be looking at.
And we're connected with the town planner often too, and, and I don't think, I think town developments are, are no longer being approved. I think the town in general is, is sort of hoping, feeling like it's time to level off. Unless all of a sudden, every household in Sturbridge starts having more children, which I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say what my crystal ball feels on that one, but I think for the most part, it's really just sort of the ins and outs and ins and outs, and you got a 10 or 20 kids swing. Hopefully, this is where we're gonna hang. But who knows?
All right, you can keep talking.
There we go, so yeah, so now we're gonna turn it over to Jody and Kathy.
I like the other conversation.
No, sorry, here you go, that's good stuff, too. All right.
So 2023 Burgess Elementary School accountability for the first time since 192019. It's holding steady. So you can see in the center of your first page that it's the accountability percentile of 72%. That's the only normative reference criteria that we have in this document. What I mean by normative reference is that Burgess is compared to other like schools that test the similar grade levels, 3 through 6, 3 through 8, whatever. Burgess Elementary does sit in a bucket of that grades 3 to grade 8, even though they don't have grades 6, 7 and 8 here, it's, those grades are in this bucket. It consists about 1,100 schools, so they're in the top, close to 25%. It's actually where they've been since 2021. I didn't take 2019 because everything changed really after that, so I said, "Let's take the three-year data." So it, it fell a little bit, in 2021, it was 80%, in 2022, it was 79%, and then 2023, 72%. But relatively speaking, when you're talking about 1,100 students, I would say that that's pretty consistent data when you're talking a normative reference. So good for Burgess to hold steady, and hopefully, they can get back up to the 80 percentile moving forward, you know? So accountability is also very complex, so I'm gonna talk big picture first and say how accountability is actually, given this particular grade of 39% as meeting targeted percentile, that's, that's the criterion reference. Now, we are comparing, from now moving forward, Burgess to Burgess, only Burgess to Burgess. So, and it is year-to-year data, it's not cumulative data. So this accountability chart compares very equally, 50%, two populations of students, all students and lowest performing students. Now, that lowest performing student group changes, it's very fluctuate, fluctuating, meaning it's based on two years of data, how they, how students rank from in two years of ELA, ENF. So it's like an average, there's a lot of components to this lowest performing group. However, it's, they are also part of your all students. The idea here with these two groups of 50% is to take this lowest performing student group, work with this group to raise the ceiling, raise the floor to the ceiling, to close the gap. That's the idea, for constantly raising the floor, that gap to the ceiling gets smaller. That's the philosophy, whether we agree with it or not, because, right? That, that is the philosophy behind the accountability system. Then, if you look to the left, there are elements in that accountability system based on the performance of those two groups. Achievement and growth, which if you look at the weight, it is a three-to-one weight, 67, right? And then, the additional indicator, which is outstanding, honestly, is the 10% of chronic absenteeism. What the four out of four means is that for all students, four out of four is that they actually exceeded their target from last year, from 2022. So the DES he gives us is target, Burgess in the all-student category exceeded, but in the low performing, actually declined, that's what zero means. And that, what that means is they, the student population had more than 10% of 18 days of absences, right, on an average. Okay? So they give you these targets that we need to aim for. Now, I will say, we don't get the targets until March, but last year was March.
Also, the targets are based on your performance before.
From the previous year.
So like, third grade's not included, right?
Third grade's included.
Well, if it's from the year before, if they weren't tested.
It's last year's third grade, it's always 3 to 6.
So.
Are you thinking about COVID testing?
Nope, I just, nope, never mind. I had to think what's the year my kid was in.
Attendance is 1 through 6, attendance is 1 through 6, it's a whole school.
Yes, very true.
So just, just to understand target, and I'm going to use the chronic absenteeism because it's an easier one, and also our numbers were great. So like, our baseline, our attendance in 21, 22 was extremely high. We, we had great attendance, we compared to, so.
Really did, I dare.
We absolutely did, well, and I'm not gonna call them out by district, but I will compare them to my colleagues, and I will probably get in trouble for this.
Of all the schools, they have the highest.
We had 14.1, which your target is a 10%. Other districts had, 19.1 was the closest, 26.7, 25.3, 30, 23.6 and 24.6. Therefore, yielding us a target for 2023, I thought it was 11, but it's saying 13, 13. So we had a higher bar to reach to maintain.
You started high.
We started high, we started at 11.
I mean, to be fair, 2021, I wanted my kids back at school.
Everyone did, right?
But both of our attendance was wonderful, I think we were 9.3, right?
Yes.
We're 9.3, so we're under the 10%, but again, target for that low, lowest performing, which, to be clear, there's multiple demographics typically associated with that population. There's a lot going on within that population that we can't just say doesn't exist. So again, I just.
So they put that out. Yes, and you know what, for all students to be exceeding the target, that's wonderful. It's sustaining that once you're at that high level, and that's a perfect point to say. And that happens for achievement and growth as well.
Right, that's why, that's.
Once you get to that 80 percentile that they were, that you were in 2021, and maybe attendance did actually help to reach those targets back then. The fact is, to sustain that is very difficult. So then we changed the, who we are targeting, in this case, that we. In this case, we have to focus on lowest performing students.
In the area of ELA. Because last year, if you remember, it was the opposite. And that's why our target for ELA was higher, because our scores were higher. So the, the bar gets raised up.
Yeah.
And math is a little bit lower, so.
So it is good for year-to-year data so that you can focus on certain populations, but those populations change over time depending on who it is. So throughout this table, it gives you benchmarks to think about. Look at a zero out of four points and you want to cringe. But if the target's at five, like for achievement, say the target is at five oh three, you know, and they got like a five oh one, a five hundred and one is actually still very high, you know? It's meeting. So that's the issue. So we don't like to see the zeros, but they happen. And with Burgess being in the top twenty-five percent of their peers, you know, we, we're concerned. We don't want to tip it certainly any lower, but we know we have to focus on certain areas. So they, they put together this, that's what the twos are. So just to give you the rubric, zero is declined, one is no change, two is below, three is met and four is exceeded. That's the rubric that they go by. But if you turn the page, this is where it all comes. Now I'm going to drill down because here are the targets. You're like, okay, what are these targets? So if you look at ELA, and they had for all students for achievement, they had five hundred point six. I do not have glasses, so if I miss a decimal somewhere, that's okay. But do you see the change is point nine? It's not even a point. It's not even a whole point. There's, there's four hundred kids being tested. Five hundred kids being, so to me, you know, it's all relative.
Four hundred.
It's all relative. Oh, yeah, there's a number there. Four seventy-two tested to only fluctuate by point nine. So.
That's excellent.
It's excellent.
I think it's worth pausing in like the, your comparative, and sorry to become late, but it's just not this data. But in your comparative schools, it's not truly a fair comparison.
It isn't.
And I, I think that that's something that's not recognized enough, that you're pretty unique here, how big the schools are.
Yes.
Some, and some of these are more wealthy communities closer to Boston. And so that's, that's fantastic.
Yep. It really is good results. Yes. Yes. Thank you for that. It's, it's a great effort by all, for sure. I would like to note, so then you see those populations of the subgroups. Anyone, and of course Burgess is so big, so they have many subgroups because all you need is twenty students or more to classify a subgroup. And you can see changes within those subgroups for each domain. I would want to point out that in the right-hand column, there, the DES came up with this reason column, which is very new, which it's really wanted to track how we are doing post-COVID versus pre-COVID. So the recovery path, when you see that term, it actually indicates that we are lower now in twenty twenty-three than we were in twenty nineteen. Again, you're so high in twenty nineteen, it's hard, it's very hard to sustain that. Plus with all the change in, in democrat, whatever, the enrollment and then kids change. So it's very hard. But still, when we're looking at a decline and still point nine, it's, it's not that bad. You know, so it's relatively speaking, what we'd like to see is the path forward. Even though you see path forward decline, path forward says that we're higher now post-COVID than we were pre-COVID. So that's what we're looking to see. So that's really where we get the tar, where the DES gets the targets to make that accountability chart. But we can go deeper because we just like data and, you know, so we're just going to keep digging. What else can we get out of this data that we? So if you look on page three, there's a lot of comparative analysis here. We can compare year-to-year data, which is what the DE, DES does naturally for us. We can do that too. If you look at Burgess in the blue, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. Our target for meeting and exceeding expectations, we do want to be about seventy percent. That's the target that the DES would like to see. But, you know, we're hopeful to get anywhere after fifty percent of our student body into the meeting and exceeding. But in order to get three out of four points in your accountability, you have to be at the seventy percent. So that's pretty high. So if you, so we have the year-to-year data in, for ELA. We can look at data from Burgess to the average of Union sixty-one, Burgess to the state comparatively. But what we like the most is the cohort data. That gives us the most information about our student population. So, and I'm going to work a little backwards because I think it's easier to deal with because we're looking at current students. So if you look at twenty twenty-three, the fifty-seven percent, that's our current fourth graders. It's a strong start. We would hope that from this point forward, fifty-seven percent of our third graders met that five hundred threshold. We would hope moving forward, they're going to continue to get higher as through the grades, right? We want fifty-seven, sixty, sixty-three, those kinds of numbers moving forward. We can look at cohort data for our current grade. Now this was, so I just said our current grade four. So your current grade five, if you look at twenty twenty-two at fifty-two percent, at twenty twenty-three went down thirty-six percent, meeting and exceeding. We want more students out of the lower two categories into the higher two categories. That's essentially what we're aiming to do, right? For targeted instruction, what happens in our, for the tiered interventions, we like to focus on students who are close to that meeting to try to get them over that hurdle, right? That's where we're going to get the most gain from our students is focusing on that group. If you look at our, from twenty twenty-one, I'm going to look at our current sixth grade, twenty twenty-one, sixty-one percent, twenty twenty-two, forty-four percent, and then twenty twenty-three, fifty-four. So they started strong, dipped, now they're climbing back up again, right? And then our current seventh grade's always, you know, the kids that just left here, we always like to get a vision of what K to six education did for them. If you start in grade four, twenty twenty-one, they started at sixty-four percent, dipped down to fifty-seven percent, but then went back up, went down again to fifty-six percent. I, there's no, I mean, we could say their formative years were a little bit, you know, interrupted because they were. And it could be a result to that. We'll see what the next couple of years bring where there's no interruption in school. So that's for ELA. For math, we can do the same thing. I'm just going to jump to what our sixth graders, our, our current seventh graders, the sixth graders who left because it's outstanding. So if you look at twenty twenty-one, forty-two percent, twenty twenty-two, I don't know what happened with that chart there, but that's okay. Same numbers, forty-four percent, and then twenty twenty-three, sixty-six percent. That is, I, that is like ideally what we want to see, right? So something was happening really strongly there. Yeah.
Program changing.
Yeah.
Changed how we deliver the instruction.
Yeah. So good stuff for that, the, the sixth graders who just left. So there's a lot of data there that you can interpret. And that we actually utilize very easily with our data teams, schools. They, I mean, I know they're using data all the time to determine placement for students and where the needs are. And then science, there's no, there's only year-to-year data, comparison data to Union sixty-one and the state. There's, because they only test in one grade level.
I think that missing cell there is eleven. That the far right is just blank. I was hoping it was zero. It's not, so it's eleven percent. Sorry about that.
Yeah, thank you. And then, so that's achievement. That's the sixty-seven and a half percent of accountability. That's achievement. Now the next area for accountability is growth. We do want to see the SGP, the target number here is fifty. And you can see as achievement increases, growth will too, right? So we have really healthy growth data. English language arts grade four was low, but we saw that with the achievement too. So when achievement wasn't rising, growth is not going to rise either. What I did is I just gave you the graphs on the backside. Believe it or not, the DES did not make it easy for me because they didn't keep the same color codes. If you see all grades, they're, it's amazing. I'm like, last year they made it easy. This year they did not. But it doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense. But if you look at the star, that's where the state is. We want to have the trend line go to that upper right-hand corner. You can see the red dot, grade five is very strong in ELA, but they were not very strong in math, right? For growth. So once we pull up achievement, we should see those growth scores move in the right direction. But still very healthy with math overall and the other three grades. And that's remarkable because we saw that in the achievement data. Any questions? And Kathy will tell you the improvement opportunities that she is working on this year.
So a lot of these are already in action. Identifying students at all performance levels with particular attention given to students scoring below the five hundred point threshold in the lowest performing student group. Perform item analysis of all assessments and identify areas of strength and weakness. We did this during, we actually did it on a faculty meeting. And we have some really good information on standards that we need to work on. We provide additional supports to the English learner students, which we've already spoken about. Analyze written responses and provide opportunities for students to write across the curriculum utilizing MCAS-like scoring methods. This is already in action as a school-wide goal. Provide supports to students demonstrating need based upon multiple measures. So we're not just looking at the MCAS. We're looking at a whole lot of other data that we take on children. Continue to improve our student support teams. That's always a work in progress. That's the team that teachers who have concerns about students can refer to the SST and get support from a group of teachers and staff, make recommendations and, you know, hopefully make progress through those interventions. Monitor the multi-tiered system of support, which is part of the SST process. Continue to provide students with multiple opportunities to develop technological skills. I'm hearing a lot from the third grade that we do need to really beef up their, their keyboarding and manipulation of the computer, the tablets. And then continue to explore our after-school learning opportunities.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, so we're going to move on to public access. If anyone would like to speak. Close public access and move on to the subcommittee reports.
Nothing? No, should be hopefully quiet here. Not a lot going on, no negotiations this year, so.
Okay. Moving on to the task.
Um, how's it going? So we have a busy meeting, um, my gosh, in October. It seems like so far along ago. We discussed the junior, this all goes through the junior high report. They got a grant for, from Bank of Ameri-.
The phone?
No, it was from Hometown Bank. Was it? Yes, for, to help families in need.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Right, I was trying to figure out which grant. Because there's another grant we talked about too. Cell phone.
Oh, yes, that's, came later in the meeting, right? Yes. That was to, for the cell phone holders, correct, right?
So piloting. Days without cell phones.
Yeah.
So, which is happening soon. Happening soon. They have the, and you might have read some articles out there where their pouches that the kids put their phones in at the beginning when they come in and they lock them up for the day and they get them when they leave, so.
They always have their phones on them, but they have to demagnetize the pouch to get the phone out.
So like your arm that goes off?
No. They actually already have a, you know, cell phone policy. It's just.
Kids need a little help.
So we're piloting that at the junior high level. I, I admire some of my brave peers. There's certainly one district in Central Mass that is piloting at the high school level. And I'm like, you are a brave, brave woman. I like trying it out at the junior high because, but it's, we're happy, we got a grant for that, so that's great.
Yeah. They're also starting a unified, unified sports at the junior high level, which will be really cool. And students will be helping out with that as well. That was really, really great to hear about. There is, at the high school level, the school play is coming up on November tenth and eleventh, so it's going to be a great one. So if anyone wants to take their kids, that's November tenth and eleventh. November fourth is the craft fair, which will be good. We heard from Luke Marvin, who was the senior of the month. He talked a lot about a lot of the co-op opportunities and a lot of that's going on, the vocational side of things. Just going to keep going through my notes. We went over, the big portion of the meeting was listening to MCAS results and similar things kind of going on there where students are doing exactly what they should be doing. So that was really good to hear. We did talk a little bit about the writing portion of it and that has been a struggle and they're working on that in the curriculum as well. And cell phone use came up with the pouches, so that's always interesting. And I'm trying to think. I think that was it. No.
Thank you. We will move on to unfinished business.
So you just have a couple, the second reading with no changes since last month. AC and DGE, we'd be looking for second reading and adoption.
Do I have a motion to amend the second reading and adopt policies AC and DJE? Do I have a second? Any discussion? Fall in favor?
You want me to run the new?
Yes.
That's okay. A new batch, most of which is housekeeping and a little follow-up on one we talked about last month, or actually Jackie mentioned last month. So first from the housekeeping point of view is just cleaning up a little bit our budget adoption procedures, which is, is really just a little bit cleaner language, but it is not changing anything that we've been doing. It just is more in line with what MASC's language is or what our bylaws subcommittee thinks is a little clearer. EB is going along with the general thought of we don't need to editorialize or pontificate. Let's just say this is, this is what the policy is. Same thing with EC. Not to mention that your previous version referred to the region, which isn't accurate, but that kind of editorializing and then clarifying there that we do have a facilities manager, that we do expect to establish some of those basic procedures and employment rules around facilities. ECA, again, cleaner, again, remember that first length, first sentence that really just didn't seem necessary and a little bit of a flow. In the end of the watchman. Which. I, I, I got nothing. I can't even, I was like, how far back? Where did that come from? I have nothing. JLCD, a number of edits based on recommendations from your nurses that have worked the last couple of PD days, end of last year into the beginning of this year to just try and clean up based on current language and current process, your wellness policy. You still have committees that review things, guidelines. You can see on the second page, they wanted to add, add a few things there. I think we've always been doing the free, always having drinking water available. The, the, the privacy of students for free and reduced lunch is not an issue anymore, at least not right now, but is something that even before, what, that's when we brought on the point-of-service system so that kids were just punching in their numbers and not being called out whether they were free or paying. So mostly housekeeping, cleaning up and some of the wording with a few things that we wanted to add and make sure noted there. I'm still in the amend. Yeah. JLCD, also at the recommendation of your nurse team. ECAF. Clarifying, again, the, the first few paragraphs, I think, got a little tiny bit of editorializing. Clarifying again, the the first few paragraphs, I think, got a little tiny bit of editorializing and just collected, they rewrite that one. Do you know, Jody, or is that from MASC?
MASC.
MASC, so this is pretty much MASC's recommendation, a little bit of housekeeping. And the last one is the one, I need to draw my numbers, that Jackie mentioned last meeting. And as we ran around trying to figure out where it came from, it's on Burgess's books only, Sturridge's. It's only on Sturridge's books. We went back to the nurse team, your current nurse, your previous nurse, the whole nurse team. They all agree it's simply not needed. So I think it's been on the books for a while, but it's something that's not needed. Some of the things that are appropriate to have are in in handbooks are sent out to students and notification in the student handbook. So we're looking to rescind that.
And it's also covered in the in ministry, med medicines, and the wellness.
With the two previous ones. Yeah, yeah.
So I would entertain a motion to amend upon first reading policies DBG, EB, EC, ECA, ECAF, JLC dash one, JLCD. Is there a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just, clarifying question. I'm fine with all the recommendations, but on DBG, it talks about the school committee. The school budget is adopted by the school committee and should represent appropriate levels of transparency. Appropriate, I don't know what that would mean. Is it, I'm not trying to be nifty, but that's the only thing that stood out to me. And dependent on one's perspective is either the right level of transparency or not. So I wasn't sure what to make of that. Any context?
Well, I mean, I I think the intention is to say you're not sitting here just adopting and voting a bottom line. That there there should be enough information and detail as part of your process as well as available to anyone who wants to see the lines in there. And we go through, which is honestly interesting because I thought, I I think some of our other policies go a little bit more through, we have a legal obligation for a public hearing. And and what exactly goes out in that public hearing, I don't think is spelled out in the law, but you have a public hearing. So I think that by, you know, default, the transparency is is being forced, but we want it. But again, that is also, it's there. It's MASC's suggested line, correct? One could say it's a tiny little bit of the typical editorializing or philosophy because it's gray and you're right, it's 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 one of those places where we would love policies to be very specific.
Oh, the best art.
Yeah.
That's what I'm like, that's interesting.
So, you know, it it's it's odd, and and sometimes I think they may recommend that we have policies that seem like they're just kind of common sense and defaults. And and you don't have to have everyone that MASC has. We've got their book of business that we review, and it's absolutely okay sometimes to say, no, we don't need that. But this is one of their recommendations.
Well, I appreciate you explaining. I'm I'm fine with it, but I just thought it was a little odd.
Just a few minor things. On ECA, children's and ground security. We have lines talking about access to the school buildings during regular school hours. There's no comment on after-hours access to grounds. Do you want to have a statement about that or need to? Just wanted some discussion about that. I don't know if we want to have a policy.
Well, we have a facility use policy.
Right.
Well, no, we don't have a facility use policy. We have a facility use process and protocol. When it's a process and protocol, we can change it without having votes.
Yeah.
It's not as etched in stone. So Mrs. Pelley can say, she can want to change that facility use form at some point in time and say, you know, we need more information or less information. So it's a question of what's in the policy. And and I and I'm sure, for example, MASC wouldn't want, would not give us any templated reference to after school, after school, because every community is different. In our district, every community is different. We've got districts where, I don't want to say it, and they'll make, open up a can of worms, but the the rec department has a key to some of the smaller facilities.
Yeah.
So.
Is do we not need it because there's no students here or they're, we're not responsible for the students?
Exactly. Right. You're, I mean, you're always, you're responsible for sort of overseeing the facility. But I think it's making it very, what's important is saying very clearly during the school day, we're in control. No one else comes in without principal okay and is on the grounds. And I think that's really the point here to say is you've put in writing during the school day, the facility is for school.
Yep.
After the school day, it kind of leaves it open to conversations as asked. You know, it, nothing stated allows conversations to be had.
And I think this is more for security than it is for use.
So this speaks to, remember, so we have signs, we actually, so we did a lot of research on this. So there was a question because there was somebody on property during school ground that caused a little bit of concern recently. It was brought to our attention. It was addressed. We actually have purchase signs, they just have not been put up yet, that post close to public access during school hours, which will be going up. Because we do have a lot of that, and I mean, Amy can attest to it, that, you know, people just passing through, but it causes a heightened level of concern because we don't know who they are. So we don't want to look like we're trying to, you know, block off Burgess entirely. But we do have an obligation to making sure that we know who's here and why they're here. So there's five signs that will be posted, making sure that, so does that answer that in a way? That it would address that, knowing that we're going to be doing that? I did have Colby Titullo look into like, is this something? Is this a no trespass thing? What is this and who needs to determine it? And through research, it lies on the the principal to set those guidelines. And we will be posting the signs to let people know that they can't be on the grounds if they're not here for school business during school hours.
So I just had one question regarding the rescind. Okay. We have a motion. All right. So, all right, so we had a motion and a second, and is there any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, those were for all the amend upon first reading.
Yeah.
Moving on to, do we have a motion to rescind upon first reading JLCD dash one? Do I have a second? Any discussion?
So just wondering, part of the discussion last time was surrounding the letter that gets sent out to families surrounding allergies. So if we rescind, we won't have in writing that a letter needs to be sent home. In reality, will that change the practice? Will we still be sending some sort of notification home if there's a student with a severe allergy?
Yeah. And and it is in writing in your nurses' protocols.
Yeah.
In your nurses' regular practice and protocols. They have all, they all agree, and certainly this building, even if they didn't all agree, would keep that in its practice, even if it's not in etched in stone policy for sure. Yeah.
It just won't require them to get that sign off, track everything? Okay.
Yeah.
So is there any word of discussion? We had a motion and a second, and, excuse me, all in favor? Okay, great. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you.
Thank you. And Jackie will be happy to know that we didn't forward any letter for the sign.
No time.